Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 21st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Could we first please stand for the pledge?
Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. First correspondence. Anything anybody wants to talk about?
So what you see there is a requested change for the location of the exterior condenser units, air conditioning. They're actually putting them behind the building. If you look at the landscape plan, they were, you know, we took measures to screen them. We will screen them again appropriately, but while it seems like a very minor change, given some of the things that we've experienced recently, I wanted to bring it to the board, make sure you know what's happening, and also get authorization to issue a memo that accepts the change.
It looks like a better location.
Yeah, they're in the rear now.
Sure. Hidden from the street.
Any issues?
No.
You have a motion or just informal?
Important.
Anything else in correspondence?
That's it.
Okay, next we have meeting minutes of October 7th, 2024. Any comments, changes?
None.
Move to accept.
Second.
All's in favor. Okay, we're in the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda is Roberta Front Street. This is a request for second, one-year time extension.
Hello, everybody. Joseph Reena, Principal Site Design Consultants.
Hey, Joe.
Looking for a time extension on the approval for Roberta's project on Front Street, which was approved on the transitional zone, and it's a mixed use of residential and commercial applications. The site plans have been submitted for signature, so we're expecting that hopefully soon. And I think they're pretty much ready to go to get a building permit application together.
Any issues in our end?
No problems.
Nothing here.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
No issues. Do I have a motion for the request for the second year, second one-year time extension for the Roberta Front Street project?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, next up, we have the T-Town Campus Renovations. This is a public hearing, I know.
I recuse myself for that.
Right. So with the rest of the members, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second, I can.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board. Andrew Tong from DTS Providence for T-Town Lake Reservation. What I'd like to do this evening is to give you a summary of the activities and the correspondence we've received since our last appearance before the board, which was September 9th, and also provide an overview of the proposed plan. But before I do either of those, I'd like Alan Sorkin, Managing Director of T-Town, to give a little background for our proposal tonight.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
I'm pleased to say since we were last here that we're still the largest community-funded nature preserve in Westchester County. Our mission continues to inspire lifelong environmental stewardship in the community. And for decades, we have been sharing our love of the environment by preserving the land, teaching people of all ages about the environment, running our environmental science camp, and reaching out to Westchester's underserved community. We have four primary objectives for this project. The first is to maintain the health of the preserve. The second is to strengthen our longstanding commitment to environmental education with a focus on indoor-outdoor classroom space, investing in our aging infrastructure, which is quite old, including improving our carbon footprint and sustainability, and create a more safe and accessible campus for the community. And I'll end by saying we're looking to enhance our mission, impact, and not our capacity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to, since our last meeting, which was the public information hearing on September 9th, we've attended, or our architects have attended the ABICA, the ABICA meeting, and had a good session with them to explain the proposed design of primarily the education building, but also the renovation of the Nature Center. We've received a copy of the memo from ABICA to the planning board, which was generally positive. Did have a request to study one element of the design, that is, a vertical element required for the new elevator and stair in the center of the building. That was done. That material was submitted as part of this application, or this month's submission to you. And I believe that we received a subsequent memo from ABICA saying that they were comfortable had accepted that study that we prepared. We've also received a number of letters from outside agencies, including New York State DEC, or these are all copies of memos to the board, or letters to the board. New York State DEC, New York City DEP, just recently, Westchester County Planning Board. They, the first two have reminded us of permits that we either don't need or do need, which we appreciate the reminders. We will be, we have been talking to DEP already about new stormwater management measures and revisions to the use of the existing septic field. And we do anticipate that we will be coming under the DEC guidelines for, or rather, general permit for stormwater discharge associated with temporary construction activities when we get to that point. I believe the Westchester County Planning Board was also generally positive in their comments. Last week, we received a memo, again, copy to your board, copy from your board, from the Bureau of Fire Protection from the town. We had a first call with them this afternoon with the fire inspector and deputy chief, and are planning to meet with them again to look at some of the issues they've raised relative to firefighting at the new buildings, and also access, access to the, particularly the maintenance building on the Croft side of the proposal, and the potential provision of a dry hydrant into connection into T-Town Lake for water supply. So we look forward to working with them collaboratively to address all of those issues. So the application itself, we also received, just as I walked in, a copy of a letter from a neighbor who we've had had contact with recently about the proposed access for the bus, which I will describe momentarily, at the existing Blynn Lot entry off Blynn Road. We're happy to speak to any and all neighbors. Alan has done so over the course of planning for this proposal and continues to reach out to all interested parties. And we look to resolve any concerns that anyone may have. So in terms of the plan, this activity, as Alan described, is to address and look at all activities occurring at the Nature Center and its surrounding facilities, both north and south of Spring Valley Road. Many of the facilities have been there for some time. They have been made to work for the purposes that both visitors, staff, students come to T-Town for. And now, T-Town has taken upon itself to revamp some of those facilities and repurpose some used areas to better serve the needs of its clientele, if you will, or visitors, and the staff people that are there to care for the 1,000 acres that extend beyond the site, and also the nature of the flora and the fauna that occurs on those properties. So there are a number of elements to the plan. The primary elements include the refurbishment of the Nature Center building. That's the main building that you see as you arrive at the site on the north side of Spring Valley Road. The creation and the construction of a dedicated education building in the center of the site. That will take the place, if you know the property, if you had a chance to hike the property, of what's called the Red Barn, which is a maintenance building that's used to house equipment and materials. It's kind of in the center of the site between the Nature Center and the Blynn Lot, not the greatest place for a maintenance facility. That will be relocated to the south side of Spring Valley Road. And in its place, a one-story education building that will have a green roof, geothermal heating and cooling, and will be designed specifically for the students that come either during the school year, class visits from various schools in Westchester and surrounding areas, as well as for the summer program for the kids that come there. If you've ever been there during a drop-off for those activities today that occurs on Spring Valley Road, the buses either pull into the main lot right next to the Nature Center or to the lot across the street, the south lot. There is sometimes a potential for conflicts with visitor vehicles, cars. And so, the second component of the plan is to create, north of that Nature Center, a dedicated drop-off. And you can see that loop coming off the Blynn Road lot at the top of the page and coming into the center of the site. That will be for buses and cars to drop off directly at the education building, so that that potential conflict area that occurs today on Spring Valley Road will be removed from that zone, and only visitors will come to that area. And in fact, the current main lot, which is just to the left of the Nature Center, will be removed, replaced by landscaping and trails, and all the parking will be moved to the south side. The existing south lot will be expanded to provide essentially the same amount of parking that is on the site today. But we believe that that, in addition to other pedestrian and vehicular circulation improvements, will help to clarify the arrival, departure, and parking activities for all who come to T-Town. Other improvements will be in the areas directly north of the Nature Center. There are a number of trails. There is what's called a raptor loop, which is a series of trails and walkways connecting between various types of animal enclosures, where kids and visitors can go and see raptors, as well as other animals that are cared for in that location. As Alan mentioned, improvement of accessibility is very important as part of this plan. And if you can see on the plan, the yellow trails, the narrow yellow trails, will all now be made accessible, not only for people with, or handicapped, but for strollers, people with, who don't like to walk on grades that are greater than 5%. And they'll be able to access many of the central core activities at T-Town. There will also be an accessible route constructed from the Blynn Lot directly down to T-Town Lake. And all of these things will help to provide access to a greater number of people that can, an easier access to a greater number of people that then can occur today. The wooded trails will remain. Those, because of the topography and because they work around tree roots and rocks, can all be made accessible, but many will be to increase the exposure of those activities and the people that they can serve. That's basically a summary of what's being proposed. We believe it's been planned in such a way to best serve, as I mentioned, the public, visitors, students, and staff, so that they can better carry on the mission of T-Town.
Thank you very much. Public hearing. Anybody from the public want to speak on the matter? Anyone? John, anything?
I don't have anything at this time, no.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
I actually, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any provisions or any thought on the possibility of a dormitory or a camp that may be envisioned in this property in the future? Meaning, opening up for the camp purpose of teaching fellow environmentalists or naturalists, that giving them an insight into this park?
We do that today? I mean, there's no, there's no intent to build a sleepaway camp, if that's what you're...
That's basically what I'm looking for.
No, there are no plans or contemplations of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one letter that Rob wants me to read into the record, because she wants to hear my terrible reading voice. It is from Mr. Joffrey S. Thompson, addresses 335 Blynn Road, Groton, Nanotson. I think you alluded to, you spoke to them.
Yes.
"T-Town Expansion Plan. Gentlemen, with regard to the above referenced plan, as a 52-year resident and neighbor of T-Town, I want to express some concerns I have. I moved into a T-Town-owned house on Spring Valley Road at the corner of Blynn Road, November 1st, 1972, and have lived there for eight years, and lived there for eight years while working part-time at T-Town. And I have lived adjacent to TLR at 335 Blynn Road for the last 44 years. Further, as a past president and two-time chairman of its board of trustees, I am deeply familiar with the organization and its growth. At the same time, I have very consciousness about preserving the unique character of the T-Town area of your town. I have reviewed T-Town's expansion plans with Kevin Carter and Alan Sorkin, and while I don't object to the overall concept, this plan will undeniably result in a major expansion of the institutional footprint. I am particularly concerned about the visual and physical impact of the proposed new access drive on Blynn Road. I would ask that the planning board and planning director to review, to carefully consider what the visual impacts will be and how they can be mitigated. The fact that the proposed road is designed for buses means it will be far more of an S-street than a typical residential driveway. Every effort can and should be made to preserve the raw appearance of the street. Extensive evergreen screening should be provided between the new bus roadway and the property line. Formal curbing should not be installed along Blynn. It is going to be challenging to not make this entrance, which will also serve as now to be formalized major parking lot, look like a suburban school entrance. But that effort must be achieved." Excuse me. "The construction impact on Blynn will further exacerbate the, by the, will be further exacerbated by the installation of and under-the-road culvert tunnel, which will be used initially to pump muck from the T-Town Lake to the opposite side of Blynn, where it will be deposited in a vaguely defined location on T-Town's land. Again, this plan requires careful review, as the tunnel is to be kept permanently. Back to the buses. It is my understanding that they will be limited to four a day, and that other vehicular traffic will be strictly restricted. Bus idling should be kept to a minimum. Driveway lighting should be held to low levels and as little as possible. The new classroom building has been admirably designed and appears to blend well with the surrounding landscape, and I have been assured that it will not cast bright light at night. Restrictions on the number of buses per day and night lighting, inclusion of screening, and streetscape preservation, restoration should be made part of the approval. A streetscape monitoring regimen determined by the town should also be stipulated. In summary, I respectfully ask the planning board and planning director to give the Blynn Road, Blynn Road area the special attention it deserves. I know I won't be here for another 52 years, but I want to do what I can to preserve and protect the character of this unique location on the planet for future residents and visitors. Thank you for your consideration. Joffrey S. Thompson." Thank you. Anything else?
Can I ask a question related to that letter? There's reference in the letter that was just read in that the vehicular parking, I guess in the Blynn Lot, will be restricted. There'll be bus traffic going to the drop-off point, and then you have another 45 or 50 spots, I think, in that lot.
That's correct.
What's, is there, is there an intention of restricting that parking? Or is it special use, or how will it be controlled?
It's just visitor parking. It's there today.
Okay.
It's...
All right. So there's really no restriction as who could park there?
No.
Somebody visiting, or, okay.
You are supposed to pay your $7 to, and put it in drop boxes.
Right.
And many people do.
Is the correspondent living in a supply at home?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
What else?
That's it.
Again, anybody from the public? That being said, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the T-Town Campus Renovations?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The motion to close the regular session and move into work session.
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Okay, first on the agenda is 401 East Main Street. This is a discussion of the site plan. Location is...
Didn't we have a walk here?
Oh, he's in the back. Mr. McCall?
Yes.
You're up.
We had a walk there, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Let's go in back, man. How you doing?
Good.
So you walked the site?
Yeah.
Yep.
Move it back.
There was, there was two changes or recommendations, or changes that we made. One was to redirect the stormwater. We had it going across the lot to the stream. And the planning board wanted it to be diverted around the septic and back into the current area where it's being drained now. So the engineer shrunk the septic system, since we're putting in a smaller building than I was zoned for. And we just, we maneuvered it around that by shrinking the septic system. And then we put in, you guys wanted some screening and vegetation around the property, which we included. And that was it. And we went in front of the conservatory board last week.
Concerns there?
They, they brought up, you guys should have it, but they brought up two things they wanted. In the buffer zone, we had some ornamentals that they wanted us to add. I forget what they were, but nothing, no, crazy, so we'll add those. And then they suggested permeated pavers in a certain area to control...
Pervious, yeah.
Yeah, to control runoff. The problem with that is, it was, where they wanted it would be right next to the septic system, and the engineer felt like that would almost kind of like flood the septic system. You almost want to keep the ground, the stormwater on top and drain it, pitch it where it's supposed to go, so it doesn't saturate the septic system. It was a very small area, but it was, where they wanted it was next to the septic system.
Now, you, you indicated on your application that you're looking for, you need a wetlands permit on this site?
I'm not sure. Is that what the engineer put in? He's not here tonight.
But there's nothing in the materials to indicate where is the wetland boundary, where is the buffer area, and things of that sort on your map? And the other concern I have is about, are you in a flood plain of any sort? Is there any concern about floodwaters coming in?
There was one, I've only, I've owned the property for about, I don't know, 15 years or 12 years, and there was one flood that happened across the street where the, where the stream goes under the road. And there was a huge rainstorm last year, or two years ago, and debris had blocked that tunnel, and the water came over the road and into my lot. That was the only time anything got washed out. It was from across the street. And then, the buffer zone is between where the building is placed and where the stream is.
But that's not shown on your paperwork, as far as I could tell.
Okay. Again, I think the engineer made it clear to the conservatory board. They, they seem to be on the same page with the buffer zone, so I'm not sure.
Okay. And then the other issue I think was raised, and the department's memo was about the parking in front of the building.
Yeah. What's, what's the issue?
John, do you want to address that?
The regulation doesn't allow parking in the front of the building. Simply, so either...
Is that something we can apply for a variance for, or?
It's something you could probably apply for a variance for, yes.
It's just, it's such a, it's a very small building.
No, I understand.
And, you know, we're really, the business is really designed for, it's a service business, so we need vehicles and, you know, not so much brick and mortar.
Right. So that's just something that has to be worked through? If it requires a variance, then that's what'll need to get. I also thought you could go into the use of the building a little bit, like how you plan to use the building, you know, the nature of the business, et cetera?
Yeah. So the business, we're, we do downsizing, small moves. We help seniors downsize that are transitioning from, you know, their home to smaller space or independent living, or if maybe the parents passed away and the kids inherited the estate and they don't have the time, or logistically they can't make it. They need to clear the house out. We come in and we get rid of the content through donations. Sometimes the content, we have storage units that I actually will be selling. They're not, they're not like shipping containers you get off like a boat. These are cosmetically much better looking. They, they come disassembled, and we assemble them as needed. They're quite pleasant to look at. You would put it in your backyard. It's not like, you know, these things that come off shipping containers. So we would use those to store some of the content in between, maybe cleaning out the house and selling the auction. And we're also selling those units as well, so we would have a couple on display. And I did speak to the board prior, I think during the walkthrough, that I would put up screening, like some trees to screen those units, so you couldn't see them from the road. But I would advertise that I'm selling them, so people come in and actually look at it. The units, the, the building itself is just going to be offices up top and two bays below to, just for storage and, you know, keeping vehicles and equipment.
So you'll be able to put, you'll, I think your engineer should put where the display of the storage containers will be, and the number of them, and the manner by which you intend to buffer or screen them?
Well, the, the screening is on, or currently on the plans, and we, I mean, I, I'm not really there yet on where I'm going to put them, but I'm assuming I'm going to put them on the back-left corner of the property just past the septic system. So there would be, the building would be on the right side of the property, and then on the left side, where there's grass, there would be maybe two or three units just past where the septic system is.
Yeah, that should...
And then, and then there would be screening in front of the septic system, the trees, the septic system, and then those units.
Yeah. So that should go on the plan at some point, if that's, if that's the plan now, that, that should get on there.
So, that would be plans on, okay.
Yeah.
Procedurally, what would be the next step here, public informational?
Yeah, I think a public informational.
I, I'm not, I mean, again, there's, there's, there's an application for a wetlands permit included in this, and there's no information on that.
Let me, let me get to that.
Go ahead.
I was on roll.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's alright. Mr. McCall, I would strongly suggest that you get your engineer, um, go in to see Robin and, uh, John to kind of work out all these questions we have and these details, to make sure that when we are ready for that public informational hearing, that your application's complete, and the questions that this board and the public might have are kind of answered beforehand. So, everything...
What, what were the questions that, that were, the, the, I'm pretty sure the buffer's already on there, uh, uh...
Yeah, you know...
Yeah, I don't see it on, on the plans that we have right now, but it's, it's not a, it's not a major thing to do.
Okay.
So, it's a hundred feet, it's going to be a hundred, hundred feet from the stream, which is a channelized stream, so it's going to be just pretty simple for your engineer to put that on there.
What's he going to put on there, just...
A line that, that shows hundred-foot wetland buffer. That's basically what it is.
So, the conservation board in this board is going to be interested, as Aaron had said, you know, are you in a floodway? Uh, what zone is it in? And any restrictions that might be placed on the property through buffers or otherwise? So, that should all be shown, uh, on this plan. And any ideas you have about the storage containers and the screening of them should all be on here. Because what you don't want to happen is you build this nice building, you develop the property, and then, uh, you're doing something on it that isn't complying with the plan, and then someone turn you in or call up, and all of a sudden you've got something that's not compliant with what you proposed. So, I always say the devil's in the details here. So, all those little details that were kind of asked up here should be basically put on this plan. So, there's little to no questions when someone looks at it. So, the wetland buffer, any flood zone it might be in, and any details you're talking about, like the storage containers areas, or how you're going to screen it, um, everything that you're thinking about should be on this plan. So, that is absolutely, you want to leave everybody with no questions.
Well, the screening's already there, but, um...
And I hear you, and I don't mean to cut you off, but you're talking about putting, um, containers on there. That should be outlined, you know, where that's going to be, that area, and you talked about screening in front of it. If that's the case, you know, i- it's got to be outlined on here.
Okay, and what, what about the, um, what you were mentioning about the permit, the wetlands permit?
So, if the property is in, is in a buffer, so wetland is a hundred-foot buffer off the wetland, that needs to be shown. If it's within that buffer, there's other, you know, hurdles to go through. But your engineer...
So, the, the building has to be one hundred feet from the stream?
It's supposed to be by regulation, but the, the regulation allows intrusion into that buffer. And when you do, you, you have to mitigate for it. Now, this was a formerly developed site, we all know that, so...
Yeah, yeah.
And the, and the, the earlier building was generally...
In the same area?
In the same area. Maybe, your building might be a little bit further back.
Yeah.
No, you want the details, you need the details.
I need to see it.
I, I, I don't think there's, you know, anyway. What I would do is get your engineer, yourself, sit down with John and Robin, and just go through all these questions.
Okay.
So that the next time you come in front of us, we have a real clear picture of what you want to do, and then if everything's there, we could set up that...
John, is that something we could do on the phone, or is that, you want us to come in?
Is it, we can do it on the phone, we can do like a Zoom or something, that's fine.
I'll just set up with email, like, uh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I wish he was here, he just couldn't make it, so...
Things happen. But work with, with the town staff.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure we'll get you there.
Now, do you want to, in the interim, set up for the public informational hearing?
Well, why don't we see what other...
Okay, that's fine.
Kind of permits we might need.
Great.
Alright.
Yep.
And then, and so then what's the next step? Do I have to wait another month or two to go through this whole...
Let's make sure that all these buffers and, you know, zones...
I just, you know what, I didn't want to do all this, and then three months later, and then there's, well, here's another couple questions you need answered, and it just keeps going.
Exactly what we're trying to...
Yeah, I know, it's my second time around.
I hear you.
And these weren't brought up on the first time, so I'm looking, so if there's anything else, like, let's, let's bring it up now. So, the third time I come in, that's...
We're all on the same page.
Your engineer should have put all that before.
Well, so, that's the reason that I think it's very important that you sit down or Zoom, uh, with, with the...
So, so what's the next step, once I do that, we go through that, do I have to come back to this?
Either way, you're going to have to come back here.
Yeah.
Your town is unique where we have a public informational hearing that was put in place years ago, so that anybody who's concerned about the project or the property gets notified before the public...
I know about that.
Okay.
But does that, I have, before I get to that, I have to do another planning board and then do that?
What I would say is, I think if John and Robin and staff are convinced that everything we need is on there, we could do a...
Might be able to skate.
I don't mind doing a public informational, if, if you give us all the information we're talking about now, we can test it the first round and then further refine it as, before the next hearing.
I would appreciate that, that would be great.
If, if he, if he doesn't have it, we won't go forward with the public informational hearing.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fair. And then, so, you'll, I'll get an email about that. In the meantime, in between that date and email, I'll work you, you out to make sure, and if you're satisfied with it, I get to go for the public, that sounds fair.
Alright.
Alright?
Alright.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright. Yeah? What's this? Here.
Okay. Good evening, we're here for Curry Honda's, Joel Greenberg and Marty Staisgal from Architectural Visions. Uh, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the lighting. Uh, we looked into it very carefully, and basically, what's there now is exactly what's going to stay. The only change is, uh, if you recall, in front of the canopy there, where the cars are being stored, there's going to be four car, uh, excuse me, three, three cars, display cards, uh, cars, and they will have some li- lighting from below, just to lighten up the cars, but nothing that's going to be objectionable. And the only thing on the building is the, where it says Honda, which has been there for years and years, and that will still be lit up. In addition, we had some conversation with John, uh, requesting on the east side of the property, there's an island there that, uh, John suggested that we put some, uh, landscaping there, which we've done. Uh, and, uh, that was taken care of, so I believe those are the only two items left, and, uh, we're ready for a resolution.
So, you're removing and relocating one light pole?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, because of where we have the four display cars that are where the, uh, permissible pavers are. The, uh, the pole is right in the middle of that, so we're moving it back to its right dead center of those four cars.
Mm-hmm. Does the canopy have lighting?
It has existing lighting underneath it.
Okay, so, you need the lighting plan. It can be a condition.
Okay.
Of the resolution, but you need it because it's required. Anytime something comes in, you got to have it. I know you're going to not change anything, but it's going to get, as part of the record.
Okay.
So, you want the, the plan to show any outdoor lighting, basically?
Just a doc, just a document.
Document, yeah, what's there, exactly, no problem.
We also want to make sure that everything conforms.
Yeah, yeah. But we're not adding anything new.
We want to make sure what exists.
Okay.
The, the light pole you said, you're going to, you're going to get a little more information on it, but the existing light pole is under sixteen or under, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That, that will comply, it's fully shielded, it's like a shoebox or something?
Yes.
Again, I would take, I would get a picture of it, so it goes on the plan, you know, things like that.
That's no problem.
Okay.
I think that's the only other thing, that's, that and the lighting under the canopy.
The only other thing I would add to this plan as a, as a note is that you will be removing those parallel parking spaces, and that you are...
Correct.
At somewhere, to some extent, you are overtopping and recoding this asphalt, right?
In, in the front, yes.
Yes, of course.
Those two things.
Okay.
Because we don't want them to show up back up again.
I just want to stress too, along this stretch, with the neighbors behind being residential, we have gotten ourselves jammed up a few times here with noise compliance.
They want to come out?
And lighting. So, it's absolutely critical that what you have out there is compliant.
Absolutely.
If not, we want to make it compliant.
No, uh, as I said, the lighting I don't think is a problem, because it's very, very minimal, and it will show it on the lighting plan, so you'll have it.
As long as it's compliant.
Yeah, of course.
We, we've heard from DOT, Robin just reminded me, that, uh, the regional, local regional engineer is probably will ask you to remove the four spaces to the east, because they're in the right of way.
Oh, the one where you wanted the island?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I see, yeah, okay, we can do that.
So, if any changes were there, that would have to come back then, right, or would just amend?
So, you can make it as conditions?
Okay.
You know, they're just...
Did they remove them?
To remove them, um...
Which ones?
And the lighting plan will be...
On all the way, uh, iron, on the far, the far left, left-hand side. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that can be a condition.
Any issues?
Nope, no problem.
Anything from the board?
No.
John?
No, just the three conditions, which is the removal of the parking spaces required, um...
Lighting.
The note about the overtopping of, of the new coat, asphalt coat, and the lighting, need the lighting plant.
Okay. Where those four spaces are, or were, should there something be done there in terms of landscaping, streetscaping, or anything like that?
But that's potential, potential area for it.
Yeah, the, the only problem I see with that is if you are coming out of those, that shop, and that landscaping's in front of you, you're now limiting the distance that you see. On two oh two, and it's hard to get in and out of there to begin with.
Right.
So, why don't we just leave the landscaping as John had recommended, all the way to the east?
Or you're putting low stuff?
Leave that there, and we'll just leave that as open space?
We, we could put a curb along the property line and put either lawn there, or, uh, or just gravel, just if you're concerned about people parking there.
Well, it's going to be, because it's on the state right of way, it's going to be a state concern.
Actually, you're right, most of the cars, most of it's on the state right of way. So, why don't we just leave well enough alone?
Leave it as a condition, and we'll explore it more as it, as more information comes.
Okay.
You've got enough, you've got enough parking without that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Plenty of parking.
John?
That, that's all that we saw.
Counselor? Do I have a motion to open a special session, please?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to declare lead agency for the Curry Honda site plan?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
In front of us, we have a neg deck, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have a resolution in front of us approving the amended site plan for Curry Honda with the three, uh, notations that John made.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close the special session.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Alright. Very much, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a town board referral to two one four five Hunter Brook Road.
What's this?
This is right down the street from me.
Hello again.
Hey, Joe.
Uh, so, tonight I'm representing John Bartolini. Uh, he owns, uh, eight and a quarter acres, uh, at twenty-one forty-five Hunter Brook Road, um, which, um, almost forty years ago was subject to a subdivision that we worked on. Uh, but, um, anyway, um, he's currently looking to, uh, he has owned the property since nineteen ninety-six, and is currently proposing to, uh, build a single-family residence on the property. Hello, um, the property is, um, this is White Hill Road coming in right here. Right here is White Hill Road coming in, and it's just, uh, this is the site right here, and it's just south of that intersection. This is a little more of a, a blow-up view of the outline of the property here. There's Hunter Brook Road, see, it has a few residences across. There's a residence, um, to the, um, north of the property, and, uh, the property to the south is vacant. This is the Hunter Brook, which almost defines the rear property line. So, the property's owned, um, R one one sixty, which requires a hundred sixty thousand square feet, which is, uh, more than, this, this property has, um, almost more than double that. The, um, there is a town wetland on the property, which is delineated on the map that you see before you. Um, there is a flood zone, but it's essentially at the rear of the property and does not affect what we're doing at all with the proposed development. So, um, as you could see, there's a, the driveway access is at, at the south end of the property, and the proposed residence is more or less, um, in the center of the property, as close as we could get without going into the buffer. Um, the, the rear of the, um, to the right of the proposed residence, you'll see a, another shaded, uh, block, which is, um, for the future is a potential garage and, um, housing for, uh, the, the owner's parents at some point down the road when, um, they may need to move in with them. So, as you, the property sits, uh, lower than Hunter Brook Road, um, so that, uh, and the house is set more or less, as I said, in the center, in, in the more gently or, or more, more slightly sloped area of the lot. The septic area is located in between the house and the, and Hunter Brook Road. That's it, that's been approved already by the health department. Um, we, we, we've done all the testing, uh, received the septic permit for that. Uh, the, as you could see to the right, um, we've got stormwater chambers to handle all the runoff from the impervious areas on the site. And, um, as you could see, to the rear of the, uh, home, um, we have some grading that's extending into the buffer. So, um, at, at this time, we're in front of the town board, as you know, it's a referral. The town board is, uh, viewing this regarding issuing a wetland permit, a tree permit, and a stormwater permit, or what we're proposing. In addition to the grading that we're proposing, s- uh, some of the, the applicant is also asking for, uh, the ability to go in and clear the buffer area of fallen and dead trees and limbs, and remove some of the, uh, brush that's, um, that's, um, between the, um, the frontage and the, and Hunter Brook.
Issues from board?
None here.
Joe, to the right of this, which I guess would be north...
Yeah.
I believe it's off the property, but I'm looking at, what I see is a spillway and a dam and a bridge. Is that the bridge on Hunter Brook?
No, that's, um, that's the bridge, there's a residence there.
But am I, am I correct, that is off the property?
That's off the property, yes. So, that's, um, that's the bridge for this, it's a footbridge that this residence has here, so, here's the property. It's off to the side here, I think it's maybe over here somewhere.
Alright. Anything else?
Nothing.
John?
So, this permit request is for the work that has been done?
So, he has gone in and started removing some of the trees and brush, that's when he was stopped. And he stopped all work at that point, and so now it's, he wants to continue to do that and finish that work, as well as, um, preparing the lot for the construction of a residence.
So, this application is to be able to construct the residence?
Construct the residence and to continue the work... Construct the residence and to continue the work of.
Of cleaning up?
Yeah, cleaning up.
And the trees that came down were all unregulated?
Um.
Or we don't know?
We don't know.
Okay.
Uh, I only know that, um, there were, there were trees that were already down on the ground.
Um, and so some grading's gonna happen within the buffer?
Yes.
Are you proposing any mitigation quite yet?
Um, no, not, not at this point, yeah. I'm sure we'll be asked to.
Okay, and is the cleanup, you know, some tree removal and pruning and so forth, is that across the entire property? Or is there a smaller area, or is there, is there a limit that we could?
Well, I, I, I think, I think he hasn't designated a limit to me that, that he would like to prescribe. I think what he, he would like to do is open, at, at one time, the, the property was all open. Um, there was fencing around there, so it was apparently grazing area of some type. Um, so he wants to kind of open it up. The beauty of the site is the topography and then the, the Hunterbrook. The Hunterbrook runs right along the back of the property. And, I mean, he wants to respect the Hunterbrook, but he also wants to be able to, to see it and enjoy it. As part of his, you know, as, as for a part of his living on the property.
So are there tre- regulated trees on the property?
Yes, yeah.
And there's no proposal to remove any of those?
Not, not in, not in the regulated area.
What do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, not, not in the buffer.
Not in the wet.
Or the wetland, yeah.
But will some regulated trees be removed in the area that's outside of the buffer?
Where the house is going, yes, of course.
So that should be part of the application, I would suspect, if there's ten of them.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
The application doesn't state that, actually. The, the tree part is blank. So if there's some trees to come down, they should be in there, right?
Okay, we'll get them, we'll get those in there.
Make it a full blown.
Yeah.
That, that's kind of the questions that I have to, you know, make it a well-rounded, you know, complete.
I just wanna pick up on what you were talking about with the work that's being done next to the stream. My preference would be to have that car to remain as natural and as undisturbed as possible, notwithstanding your client's desire to be able to see it. Because I think that's the whole purpose of the wetlands preservation here, and, um, I don't see any information as to what is going to end up there. After he's done. How is it gonna be altered, to what extent, how significant? Or insignificant changes is he, is the client proposing there?
Right. So my understanding is, he has no intent of grading or disturbing the area or using it as lawn. He clearly, um, wants to just have an open feeling behind his home, out to the, out to the Hunterbrook.
It says.
And if he, and, and if you, if you were at this, if you could, if you, um, saw the site. You would see that it's really just all brush that had grown in, and the amount of trees are really not many. You could see, it is an old, uh, an area that was formerly a, uh, you know, a turnout area possibly for horses or whatnot. Uh, because the fencing is still out there, you know, so.
That may be true, but I am concerned about one of the notes on your plans, which says, clear out all the underbrush. So that could be a re, you know, I don't have enough to even evaluate what that means.
Right.
I mean, a couple of pictures would be, you know, would be helpful perhaps.
This is gonna be in front of the conservation board, though, right?
That's correct.
So you bring.
Wednesday.
You bringing fill in for the driveway?
Yes.
You bringing it in?
We're gonna have to. Yeah, it's quite a drop, it's quite a drop.
Yeah, you say you're gonna calculate all the cut and fill and.
Yeah.
At some point, yeah.
This is one of the challenges I have with the tree plant, tree permits and all of that, right? This is private property, eight acres of private property that abuts along the stream. And by underbrush, I mean, we don't know, right? You're right, pictures would be great, but it could be invasives, it could be. Yeah, I know, I don't have enough. Barbary, you know, kind of just. I, I can't evaluate it at this moment. But if he, if he wants to, what we need to see is more of a landscaping plan associated with the site plan. To understand exactly what the intent is. Um, if he wanted to have lawn there, there'd be no reason why he shouldn't be allowed on there. Well, I'm not so sure I agree with that a hundred percent. I mean, the wetlands law, we all know, is a permissive law. And it allows you to do certain things that you have to mitigate for, so I, I just don't see enough here to even.
Yeah.
Just say, all right, once a lawn. You're absolutely right, we don't have enough detail. We don't have enough yet, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not objecting to any of the proposed uses, I just can't evaluate it yet.
I, I will tell you, when we were subdividing this property, you, it was just a field all the way out to the stream.
That's, that may be true.
It was just.
I just don't know here.
Field, you could.
It's just been unmaintained and overgrown.
Yeah, that, that's what happened.
So were you?
Which doesn't mean it has, doesn't have value in that, in that.
Right, right.
Were you involved in a subdivision of this?
Yeah.
That never came to, was never finalized?
Right, it was owned by Feldman, they own this, they own this piece, the piece to the south. And then the piece on the other side of the, um, of the, um, Hunterbrook. Which became part of Fox Den, Fox Den.
So this was a distinct standalone piece as part of three other pieces, all standalone pieces of property?
And Feldman's also lived in the house to, to the north, too.
If I can interject, in two thousand nineteen, Hurricane Floyd turned that whole thing into a lake. From the bridge on Hunterbrook, all the way through that valley.
Maybe, yeah, I don't, I didn't see it.
That house was.
Oh, that house.
It looked like it was an oasis.
Oh, yeah.
In an island. That whole section from the driveway.
Well, that's, yeah.
Off Hunterbrook, where the bridge is, all the way through.
Is that when the, is that when the dam broke?
Yeah, there had to be.
On the Mill Pond Dam broke?
I think you're right, that's when that dam went.
Yeah.
So, John, just a quick question, if somebody wants to remove fallen trees or limbs, whether it's related from a storm or just dead trees. If it's in a wetland area, a delineated wetland, they'll need a permit to do that?
If it's over a certain threshold, I think it's five thousand square feet, or, or, or maybe.
Twenty, it's twenty.
Twenty thousand, okay.
Yeah.
If it's over that amount.
In the wetland, if, if it's not away, delineated as wetlands, can somebody do that maintenance work in their backyard or their field?
Provided they don't go over that disturbance amount, but jet, yes, generally, so. Most of the stuff that appears to have taken place here seems to be unregulated permissible acts.
Right.
I don't know, we don't know exactly what trees came down, because they're gone already, but.
Right, right.
Um, so, but then again, now we're, we have, this permit is for building a house, so it's kind of makes it a different animal.
Right, okay.
So what do we do now?
Write a, a memo to the town board.
Okay.
Asking if you want more information such as was discussed, then you can ask for it.
I would also say we should wait to see what the conservation board comes up with. And some of that into.
Okay.
Okay.
Right?
That's good.
Thanks, Joe.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, next we have another town board referral, it's the solar moratorium.
So we did that already. Twice. Where we at on that?
That is an extension, the, the moratorium ended September thirtieth, this is an extension of the very same moratorium.
How, how long another?
That is six months.
Another six months.
Another six months, so I guess the questions are, should it be another six months, three months, four months?
Six months.
A year.
We're not advising them, I can't say, you know, it's up to them.
And the other question that came up is whether or not the large-scale rooftop. Arrays should be part of the moratorium. So for instance, Curry Honda.
So by large, you mean in a commercial or not a home?
Not a home, you know, it goes over the, the kilowatt rating.
Right, right, right.
But isn't, isn't that what people have been upset about, is they'd rather see it on roofs? And on areas that are already disturbed?
Yeah, that's part of the.
I personally think that the rooftops should be exempt.
Yeah, let those come in front of us, we review them.
The rooftop community should be exempt.
Keep taking them out of the moratorium.
Right.
The prob, the problem with that comes up like what we're talking about with Curry. That no longer is just a rooftop, it's a large rooftop. More important, it's a, it has a visual impact. If it was BJ's and nobody was gonna see it, I think it's a whole different animal. But being that it is gonna be in your face, east or west, on two oh two. Becomes a different.
I don't think it should matter. It takes, it takes the, uh, Curry Honda out of the grid and gives them, uh, self-sufficiency.
Why can't?
That's the whole point.
I think it should go, they should take that out of the moratorium.
Take it out of the moratorium.
I think it's something, at least for now, and I agree with you, and we have them in front of us now, maybe there's things they could do. As, to tweak that project, if they know this other one's coming, to address it.
Curry?
Yeah. Right? If we're doing the whole place.
Right.
Yeah, but I think when we did the site walk, there was no way that, if we're thinking about power pit walls or anything like that. They're not gonna cover that roof like.
Well, again, we're worried about, I mean, visual impact from residential, right?
Right, that's a commercial zone, I mean, yeah, there's gonna be.
There's a visual impact, that's the only issue there.
I think we do delineate between the two, and we look at each project on its own merits, but I think the, you know, the challenge has been large systems on the ground in residential areas.
Cutting trees.
And that's the thing that really needs discussion. The others are appropriate use in an appropriate zone for appropriate reasons.
I agree. Okay, so I think we'll ask that they pull the, the building-based or roof-based large solar out of that.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
I think you think of, John?
Those were the only two things that I had thought about.
Counselor? All right, next we have a town board referral, amending chapter two eighty water. What does it mean, water?
Water's good.
I'm not even saying.
Send a memo.
Can be here till midnight?
No planning, uh, discussions, or issues?
Don't see any.
There's discussions on this.
Oh, I hear, I hear. That should be between the Department of Public Works and the town board.
Uh, yeah, this is, you know, and I think what's really happening here, it's not, you're not commenting on whether or not there should be fluoridation in water. But you're commenting on the change to the law that allows them to move, move it in and out by resolution, so. That's the comment, which I don't think you probably have any planning comments.
Is there any planning?
I have comments, but not planning comments.
You might have legal comments.
You wanna stay here till three o'clock in the morning. Listen, I heard Tom in the back talking, he's gonna file agreements that ever since Sue's been back on the board, the meeting's gonna go to way into early morning hours.
Is it fluor, is it fluoride with CBD or without CBD?
So, nice memo, we have no planning.
No planning issues with the town water.
All right, good. So I have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's pretty good, an hour and three minutes.
Right.
Not bad.
Take care.